Can I have your attention, please? If everybody will take a seat, we're going to get started. We don't have a quorum yet, but we're going to get started with our presentations. And I believe Councilman Sivornic has a presentation that he made. The chair recognizes Councilman Sivornic. Where is he? Went to get my coffee, okay. Here he comes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, today is a bittersweet day in the office of Council District 15 for we are bidding farewell to one of our staff members who is going to be leaving us to join the private sector. Greg Healy, my legislative deputy since the beginning of October of 1997, will be leaving us today and leaving city service to join the private sector as a regulatory administrator for Sempra Energy. Greg has been at my side as legislative deputy here on the council floor and has been with us for this many, many years doing a yeoman's job for not only Council District 15, but for the people of the city of Los Angeles. And I think it would be very appropriate to mention that in this era of term limits, not only, I believe, do we lose the corporate memory of those who are elected to public service, I think we lose the individuals among us who do a lot of the groundwork and a lot of the footwork to make this city operate the way it should, and that is legislative and council deputies. Greg also had some recent good news, and I hope not to embarrass him, but just last week, he became engaged to be married. And so, that's really good news also. I think I would also be less than a gentleman, colleagues, that if I did not mention, that those of us who are elected get to stand behind the podium, get to stand up and make the speeches, on occasion get to receive the accolades of those we serve in our district and across the city. But it is very capable staff, as I have surrounded around me and next to me, that do a lot of the hard work that those of us who are elected get to take credit for. I have had an easier tenure. I have had a successful tenure because of a very competent staff. And among those ranks of individuals who I not only consider one of the best deputies that I have had during my administration, but also a very good friend, one of those individuals is Greg Healy. So, he deserves that. So, members of the council, would you please join me in honoring a perfect gentleman? A gentleman that I know will go far in the private sector and a gentleman that I have been honored to have him serve the people of this city and this council district. I am honored that he was my deputy, and I'm even more honored that he was my friend. Now the moment that all council deputies wait for. Is there three moments at the microphone? Greg Healy.
It's a good thing they're not as long-winded as their bosses.
I'd just like to call item 37 special. I don't know what it is, but I always wanted to say that. No, I really appreciate this. It's far too kind. I've thoroughly enjoyed my time with the city and, you know, didn't need an award to remember the fond memories I'll take with me as I move into the private sector. And I appreciate that Rudy said "private sector" nicely. I'm learning to try to do that. But I do appreciate it. And foremost, I'd like to thank the staff behind me. Working in a council office is very much a team environment, and I think, and I'm only one member of that team, and without their camaraderie and working with them, you know, none of my successes would have been possible. So, I really want to thank them. And most importantly, I want to thank Rudy. About four years ago, I came into his office and probably handed him a resume in about 40 font to be able to fill up a page. And just looking for someone to give me a chance, and he did that. And I'm very grateful for that, and I'm very grateful for this. So, thank you.
Now we can go on with the agenda.
Not yet. Have a good time. We're not even close. Chair recognizes Mr. Hernandez for a presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I'd like to call Joe Escarino up and Manny Argu Manes.
Manny.
Manny Argu Manes. Members of the council, it's my honor today to introduce two of the city's finest. One is a retired Los Angeles police officer, and the other one is an active Los Angeles police officer working with Metro. And Joe and Manny basically recognize what a lot of people recognize when they're watching the news nowadays, and that is that Los Angeles has become the pursuit capital of the world. It seems that there's always some vehicle that's refusing to yield. And when police officers have to deal with those issues, there's a lot of question marks. You don't know why that person is not yielding, but it does create a phenomenal problem, not only for police, but the citizens of the city of Los Angeles. And so, the reason I'm recognizing Mr. Escarino and Mr. Argu Manes is because they decided to do something about it. They basically decided that it was important that they basically work on a solution. And what these officers basically did is they used technology to create a system called STOVAC. It's their invention. And STOVAC is a device that, when installed in a vehicle, works with police and personal computers to locate and, if necessary, disable the fleeing stolen car in preventing the waste of resources and the danger to the public that happens with high-speed pursuits. Just recently, the Santa Ana Police Department used this product last weekend and had a successful number of arrests. Joe and Manny will share that information with us, but first, I think we have a 60-second video that I'd like to see.
Hello and welcome to our millennium special broadcast of Business World News. I'm Mario Machado.
I'm Penny Griege, with many well wishes from all of us for the new millennium. In today's first story, we follow the realm of high-speed pursuits.
Each year, there are thousands of vehicle pursuits across the nation. As they increase by the year, so does the threat to human safety on our roads. The FBI estimates that there are between 1.5 to 2 million vehicles stolen nationwide each year, with a total loss of approximately $8 billion.
But Mario, now there seems to be a solution. A few years ago, two LAPD officers developed a brilliant approach to combating the menace that carjackings and high-speed pursuits pose on our lives. The device is called STOVACT, the Stolen Vehicle Activation System. It's an anti-theft system that induces complete shutdown capability to the vehicle within one minute of activation. How does it work? Here's Pat Matthews with the inside story.
Imagine having the ability to know exactly when your car is stolen and being able to proactively affect the termination of the crime in progress. To have the comfort of knowing that your investment is safe is a luxury all of us would like. Well, now, it's possible and available right at your fingertips. Hi, I'm Pat Matthews. We all go about our daily lives thinking that we're in control until we become a victim, a victim of another carjacking or accident caused by a high-speed chase. Within the past year, there were over 2,600 high-speed pursuits in California alone, with 377 victims killed and over 600 police officers or innocent civilians injured. And most of these dangerous high-speed pursuits were caused by auto theft and carjackings. Well, now, there's a revolutionary device which takes the control away from the criminal and puts it back in the hands of the victim. It's a high-tech, GPS-monitored anti-theft system that was developed by Joe Escarino and Manny Argu Manes, two active LAPD officers who had a firm belief that stopping crime should also be an empowered right of the civilian. After witnessing the devastating effects of vehicle theft, carjackings, and high-speed pursuits, they developed a high-tech way to stop criminals in their tracks. Why was the Stolen Vehicle Activation System invented?
It was invented for the reason being that nine years ago, we were having a rash of stolen vehicles and high-speed pursuits by the police. I am still an active police officer for the LAPD. And there was, at that time, there was no solution to stopping car thefts or police pursuits. So, I came out with the idea of having a car alarm integrated with a pager. The car is stolen, the police officer or the consumer could dial, make a phone call, and shut the vehicle down.
Manny, tell us, how does the pager remote work?
First of all, the consumer or the victim can relax if they've just been involved in a carjacking situation.
I'd like to call Joe and Manny up to say a few words real quick.
Thank you. I would like to start off by thanking the entire city council, especially Mike Hernandez, for giving us the opportunity to be in front of you here. I guess that whole tape explains the entire concept of what we have, the whole idea. It's 10 years now. And basically, it was to, since spending years and actually doing the pursuits, 11 years ago, there was no concept or system that could actually assist the police officers on how to stop a high-speed pursuit. So, the scenario at this time, when we actually have the STOVAC product, is if you could imagine a police officer pursuing a vehicle, running a plate, querying the MDT or the computer in the vehicle, comes back in a license plate, the vehicle is stolen, has one of our units. At this point in time, police officers throughout the United States will have the ability to shut the vehicle down before they even get in a pursuit. And this product is going to be for the benefit of the police officers and the benefit of the consumer, and hopefully it will decrease car thefts and police pursuits. At this time, too, I would like to donate two of our units, which, like Councilman Mike Hernandez stated, Santa Ana is using it with a big success on sting operations. My partner and I, on behalf of STOVAC, will donate two STOVAC units to the LAPD. I have no idea what protocol, red tape, we have to go through to get them in use. But I'll get with Mike Hernandez, and he'll assist us with it, and hopefully they'll put it to good use. And after 20 years, my partner, 14 years in the police department, I think we have a good idea that would benefit the city of LA. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. And I also like to thank Councilman Hernandez for acknowledging us today. And like my partner said, we developed this product about over 11 years ago. And our whole goal was to end these high-speed pursuits, to save lives, protect innocent victims, and today, that's still our goal. I'd like to dedicate this award to all the officers and their families who have been, who have lost their lives due to these high-speed pursuits. As Joe said, I have 14 and a half years on the department, and I also like to share this honor today with the LAPD and all the officers that go unnoticed for all the hard work that they do in risking their lives for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
I just want to present two certificates of appreciation. I'll read what they say. This is to Manny for your efforts in creation of STOVAC, an innovative new technology which will help prevent car thefts and dangerous high-speed pursuits. This device, when installed in a vehicle, works with police and personal computers to locate and, if necessary, disable the fleeing stolen car, preventing a waste of resources and a danger to the public on high-speed pursuits. And for that, you have a certificate of appreciation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, Joe.
Did I catch Rick?
Yeah. He's got Mike.
Oh, I got him wrong.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam President. And again, I saw Harry taking notes. He's the one who relies on the police department, so I'm sure he'll be working on those two units for the department. The chief probably needs one so they don't steal his car.
Yeah, right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez, and congratulations to both of you for thinking this up. Chair recognizes Mr. Sivornic for an introduction.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, today we have a very special visitor here in the council chambers with us. Alina Resinos is visiting City Hall while on spring break. She is the niece of our voting clerk, Anna Martinez. She is in the 7th grade at Fleming Middle School in Lomita and is a resident of Harbor City and Council District 15. And we would like to welcome her today to City Hall and hope she has a good day. Maybe we can even get the cameras on her so she can see herself on TV tonight. There we go. There you go, Alina. All right. Thank you, Madam President.
What time does it rerun?
Well, let's see. We should be about 8:15 tonight.
Yeah, okay. I think we now have a quorum, and we're ready to begin. Sure. No, the clerk has to call the roll.
Bertincheck, Fuhrer, Glanter, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pajeco, Bedia, Really, Thomas, Fornes, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present in a quorum. Madam President.
All right. Thank you. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, April 11th. There are 15 council districts. There are 10 council members present, which is enough to have a meeting. We are being viewed on Channel 35 and also available by council phone. Let us begin by...
Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes. Without objection, the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
On them, too.
Before starting the regular agenda, there are several items to be continued. Item number 1 and 5, a request from Building and Safety and the council offices to continue those matters till April 18th. 1 and 5.
All right. 1 and 5. Any objections? Those are now continued.
Item number 14, a request from CD9 to have that matter continued till April 18th.
Any objections? It's continued.
Item number 20, a request from Council District 10 to have that matter continued to April 17th.
All right. Any objections? Item 20 is continued to April 17th.
Item 23, a request that that matter be received and filed. Recommendation of the Housing Department and Council District 10.
All right. Any problem with that? Unanimous vote.
Brings you back to public hearing items. Items number 2 through 4 and 6 through 7 are items noticed for public hearing.
All right. We have cards on 6 and 7, so let's call those special. And does there anybody who wants to be heard on item 2 or 3? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Members of the council, specials 2 or 3?
Actually, no, but Madam President, if I could move reconsideration of an item from Friday's agenda...
Well, let's get rid of 2 and 3 first, okay?
Madam President, item 4, request to continue...
No, no, we're trying to deal with... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. 2, 3, and 4, yes.
Thank you. Item 4, request continued till April 25th. It does require a motion. We've previously suspended rules, and we do have the concurrence of the applicant.
Okay. As long as you have the concurrence of the applicant. So, item 4, you want to continue until when?
April 25th.
Okay. Any objections? Item 4 is now continued. Items 2 and 3, the public hearings are closed. No specials. Open the roll on items 2 and 3. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved.
The action on number 2 is actually to continue the hearing ordinance till May 3rd for second hearing.
Right. And do we leave the hearing open then?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Item 2, the hearing remains open. Item 3, the hearing is closed. Okay. That brings us to... Mr. Fuhrer, you head?
Thank you, Madam President. On Friday, we had what was then item number 6, having to do with a series of instructions to the library department. In addition to what we moved, I'm going to ask that we... I'm going to move reconsideration so that we can add the Personnel Committee Chair's communication to the series of instructions.
Mike, I think after more than one meeting, you can't move reconsideration.
Okay. Can I just... What is the procedural method by which I can add the Personnel Committee Chair's recommendations to that action item?
I think you actually technically have to do a separate motion.
Can it be orally, or must it be in writing?
You better do it in writing so they have a file on it.
Fair enough. We will do that and submit it today. Thank you very much.
We'll get it done today, and it'll go as a rule 16.
Item 6 from Friday, it's a library... It has to do with recruitment of library...
Okay. Let's go back to item 6 for Wednesday. Items 6 and 7, we call it special because we have cards on those. Let's go through the rest of the agenda.
Items number 8 through 13 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held.
All right. Members of the council, any specials 8 through 13? 8 through 13, going once, going twice. Open the roll on 8 through 13. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved.
The ordinance is held over one week until April 18th for second reading.
That's 8, 9, and 10 have to be held for second reading. Okay. Next.
Items number 15 through 41, with the exception of 20 and 23, which have been acted on.
All right. We have cards on 28 and 35, so let's call those special. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. 28 and 29. Okay.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
Pursuant to department requests, and I concur, we're going to continue item 27 until the final report on the program is complete.
And do you have an estimated date to which we are continuing it?
Two weeks should be sufficient. If not, we will continue it at that time again when we get it all coming to us at the same time.
All right. So, item 27 will be continued until April 25th.
April 25th.
I'm looking for specials.
32.
32. Mr. Burnson calls 32 special. Well, that's a report anyway, so we... Thank you. We need to have that called special. Okay.
Item 40, Madam President, as well.
40. Mr. Fuhrer calls item 40 special. Anybody else? Items 15 through 41, except for the ones we already acted on. Any more specials? All right. In that case, open the roll on 15 through 19, 21, 22, 24 through 26, 30, 31, 33, 34, 36 through 39, and 41. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. Those are approved, and the ordinances all go over a week. Number 30, forthwith. Why not?
That brings you back to item number 6 that was called special.
All right. Item number 6. We have three people who wish to be heard: Melrose Larry Green, Teresa Bagzarian, and Yolanda Padregal. Mr. Green.
Good morning, everybody. It's the morning after Election Day. Congratulations to everybody, especially to Laura Chick for breaking the glass ceiling and being the first woman ever elected to a citywide post in Los Angeles. Now, I always thought that city council is a citywide post, so...
Item 6.
But apparently, you thought a lot of things otherwise. And a... And especially, congratulations to Antonio Viroso. More about that later. Item number 6, folks, is hearing comments relative to application for determination of public convenience or necessity, quote unquote, for alcohol sales for off-site consumption at Anus Market located at 1468 Tamarind Avenue. And this is a recommendation for council action determining that the issuance of a liquor license at Tamarind Avenue will serve the public convenience or necessity and will not tend to create a law enforcement problem. Let me tell you about Tamarind Avenue. That's a high-crime area. It's right off Franklin area near Hollywood Boulevard. The Freeway Slayer had an apartment on Tamarind Avenue a few years ago, okay? There's prostitution, drug dealing, alcoholism. I live about a mile from Tamarind Avenue. I don't really think that it's in the best interests of that council district to grant a permit for alcohol consumption on Tamarind Avenue. And if you don't know what Tamarind Avenue is like, some of you ought to take a walk around there sometime and see who's out there. Thank you. I'm Melrose Larry Green. Congratulations again to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bagdazarian.
Hi. I'm not prepared for... To speak. I'm the owner of this supermarket. 11 months I'm the owner. I lost almost everything. People asking for wine and beer because of poor area. They cannot go to a restaurant or liquor store. And this is small Armenian community, and they asking for very cheap beer and wine. So I'm losing everything. Please, I'm not prepared to speak.
No, I think you've made your point very clearly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sit tight. All right. Yolanda Padrego.
Good morning, counsel. I'm here acting as representative for the applicant, and I was here just to answer any questions that may come up regarding the application. So if there's nothing to be said, then I have nothing else to say.
All right. Thank you. That's very prudent. Members of the council, item 6. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Better do that one forthwith. Next item, I believe, is item number 7. It's Harriet Billford.
Good morning, and I also want to wish Councilwoman Chick...
Wait, we can't hear you. There you go. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Harriet Billford, and I want to start also by congratulating Councilwoman Chick and Councilman Fuhrer. I handed the clerk some letters that I wrote to you and also copies of a letter that went to the zoning administrator that I hope was handed out to each of you and that you'll read. I've appeared before the council dozens of... On dozens of occasions with respect to these cities nuisance revocation hearings, but this time, it's a little different because I'm here as a witness. I don't represent them. I'm an attorney, as most of you know, but I'm here... Again, my office is just a few blocks from the Ridge Motel. I've practiced law there for the last six years. I've seen this motel turn around since Mrs. Young purchased the property. I drive by it a minimum of two to three times a day on my way to work and home, sometimes as late as 3, 4 in the morning. I work very late hours. Again, when... Some of you may recall, especially Ms. Miskowski, when she was the deputy, Councilman Brody, when the motel was the chateau, it was a horrible place. And then it became vacant after the conditions were imposed for several years. It was infested with weeds. There were loiterers. Since Mrs. Young took it over, I have never noticed one problem. What's interesting in this case is I've appeared at all of the zoning administration hearings, and at no time has even one neighbor testified against it. There's not been any documentation submitted against this place except by the police department. Instead, there were over 75 petition signatures and dozens of declarations from people that live directly next door to the motel, which indicate that there's never been a problem since Mrs. Young purchased the property. And I can attest to that as well. Again, all of the favorable evidence was ignored. Instead, you all relied on what the police said and the documentation. It's interesting that this is one... I'm familiar with every single nuisance case. I'm familiar with all the hearings. And this is the first case I am aware of where there has not been a PACMS report submitted, according to the zoning administrator. I think that's true. No radio calls, not one incident. The officer testified that there were no incidents of any arrests or any illegal activity that were attributed to this property on the PACMS reports. The only thing that you have before you are the vice officers, what I call self-manufactured evidence. They have not complied with the directives that, as you know, I've given you copies of the special order. They have not backed up their documentation with registration records, although they say that they're not providing proper registration. I handed out... One of the things I handed out was an article that was in April 4th of the LA Times, where one of the council members is quoted as saying that she believes that the council, at least in the past, was too willing to accept the department's explanations. And I quote, "In some minds, the police are always assumed to be correct. If any of us had those notions in the past, we have seen enough to disabuse us of these notions now."
Okay.
I'm almost done. Anyway, there has been no compliance. Tomorrow, I'm scheduled to appear in Department 36 of the Los Angeles Superior Court with respect to a lawsuit that I filed on behalf of my clients to hopefully get an injunction to get the police to finally comply with these directives, since I haven't gotten any of your cooperation. In the two months from now, when these people are supposed to file a plan approval review, I bet you anything the police are going to come up with something else, and you are going to very use that as evidence to close them down. Thank you for not listening.
Well, that's a nice way to make your case. That closes the public hearing. Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I know the zoning administrators here... There are three people here from the Van Nuys Police Division. Members of the council, this was one where the zoning administrator had it under review, under revocation, and in a plan approval, was reviewing whether or not there had been compliance with the conditions. And in fact, at least outwardly, there have been some changes in the property. It's been painted, it's been kept up. But this was also a case where the specific condition of not having to... Not being able to rent it one room for more than a 24-hour... Less than a 24-hour period was being violated. We had vice officers who went in, indicated that they wanted to rent a room with a prostitute, indicated that to the owner, and the owner said she didn't care and was going to go ahead and rent the room. She was arrested. She pled no contest in a case in court. And this happened just in September of last year. So there was clear violation of conditions, clear knowing violation of conditions by... And not by a staff person who someone could say wasn't aware of it. This was the owner herself. And I think based on that testimony from the police department, the zoning administrator indicated that there were... He was going to impose stricter conditions in terms of the monitoring and the management of this, require the security guard on the premise at all times, and put this under for a very short-term, short-leash plan approval because the evidence was very, very specific. And in fact, it's interesting that although there wasn't a PACMS report, we didn't need a PACMS report because we had direct police testimony about a specific violation that had occurred at this premise that the police themselves were witness to. So I am asking that we approve the planning committee report to impose the conditions that the zoning administrator indicated. And if there's any need for any further testimony, we have the zoning administrator and the police department here.
Well, no one else has asked to speak. So open the roll on item 7, Ms. Miskowski's motion. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That's approved. The next ones I have on here are 28 and 29. The people who had put in cards have... Were all in favor and have indicated a willingness to not speak if the council is ready to vote. Now, items 28 and 29, members of the council, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Those are approved. Forthwith on those, please. Next item.
Item number 32, called special by Councilmember Burnson.
Yes. Mr. Burnson has called item 32 special. Item 32, I believe, is a report. Well, there's a lot of noise up here, but there's not a lot of meeting going on. We're on item 32, members of the council. Presentation by the chief legislative analyst. Has anybody seen him? There he is. Okay. Good morning.
How are you? And President, members of the council, we're... The selection team has interviewed several people, evaluated all the proposals. We're in the last stages of making a selection. We'll be meeting next week again with Department of Justice. We've been trading communications. One of the difficulties thus far has been that the proposals are compositions of various teams, and strengths of each piece of those teams on different aspects have made the evaluation a little more complex than I think we anticipated. But we should be, in the next couple of weeks, I think, concluding our selection process and be back to council with, hopefully, a consensus proposal.
In roughly two weeks, three weeks?
Roughly two weeks. We'll meet next week. I'm not sure what...
Depends what they say.
Yeah. I'm always optimistic.
Really? When did that happen? Okay. Anybody have any comments in that case? Mr. Burnson? Where's Mr. Burnson? Mr. Burnson was the one... Mr. Hernandez.
I just want to ask some questions. Are you planning to come to the council then with just one choice?
Yes.
And when does the council get an understanding of the difference of the teams?
You can, at that point, what our direction was is to come back with a contract with a... With a team that was acceptable to all consensus proposal. And then at that point, if you don't care for our choice, we can explain how we got there.
Well, yeah, but I also... And, Mr. Deaton, I guess part of the question I'm asking is because you have several teams with different strengths and weaknesses, I'm sure that you're reviewing, and you're going through a process. I don't think the council's intent was to give to the Oversight Committee the authority to choose that team. I thought the council's intent was for you to go through a selection process and hopefully give us some understanding of what the differences in the teams are, where's some strengths and where's some weaknesses. If that's not the case, I think we should all be aware of it.
We can... What our direction was is for us to come back to council with a contract with our selected contractor for... The selected monitor. Incumbent in that is also that, at this stage at least, is that the Department of Justice would also concur in that selection and that the city team was on board with that selection. If we... When we come back with that selection, it's not unlike any other request for proposal. If the council doesn't like the selection that we've made, we'll explain where we are and what the other teams were and why they were either accepted or not.
And I guess part of what I'm asking is, what if Justice was to be in agreement to any of the three teams or any of the four teams? They basically would concur with a variety of teams. Are they also being forced to say just one team?
I'm not sure by forced. The intent is that the city group and the DOJ would agree on a selection. I don't think, right now, I wouldn't characterize DOJ being forced to select anybody.
But, see, the reason I'm asking the question is because if we had... And I don't know if we want to do this in open session or we do it in closed session, but if we had an overview of all the teams, and when I say we, the council, and then we had a perspective from the police department, a perspective from the CLA's office, a perspective from the mayor's office, a perspective from our... The city attorney's office, our negotiators, we would have an opportunity to see what's out there. I mean, what's available to be the monitor for the purposes of this consent decree. And then we might want to have some interaction in terms of the selection of the actual team that would be proposed to Justice. What we're hearing in return is that our negotiating team is coming up with who they want to submit to Justice, and if Justice concurs to that, then that would be the team that's brought forward to the council. Is that correct?
Basically, but the one difference is, is that we've gone through hours of interviews and hours of discussion with the Department of Justice on each of the proposals, and it's not a... And we did that... The interviews, we did mutually. In other words, the interviews, there was a team from the Department of Justice and a team from the city, and we asked... Everybody listened to all the same questions and all the same answers and went through the process, and we're going through the process together. It's not that the city is going through a process and then giving to the Department of Justice a selection and saying, what do you think? We're mutually working together, interviewing together, analyzing together, and trying to come to some consensus on what the monitor would look like.
So then the selection, the proposed party that would be brought to us would be a party that mutually was agreed upon between Justice and our team?
That is the goal. We aren't there yet, and otherwise, I would be telling you who that was today.
Uh-huh. Okay. Is there a short list, or is it still the same list that we saw in the LA Times? See, that's how far away from it we are.
Well, there's a short list.
Okay.
Composed of the long list you showed in the LA Times.
Composed of the long list we showed in the LA Times. Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Burnson, you called this special.
No, this is just a report, so... Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. That disposes of item 32. We, I guess, note and file the report. And that brings us, I believe, to item 35. What happened to 28? Oh, no, these are... The cards are back. Okay. Item 35. Mr. Green. Can I ask you, councilmembers and Mr. Deaton, to move out of the way for Mr. Green? Thank you.
You know, folks, even though I've only had about an hour and 45 minutes of sleep, my Brandeis and Cornell journalistic eye is quick. There's a typo on item number 35. Let's see if all you in the council can find the typo before I discuss the item. I'm only going to talk for about 45 seconds. Item number 35 is a motion relative to a lease agreement with the Department of Water and Power, hereafter referred to as DWP, for parking for the Los Angeles Police Department, hereafter referred to as LAPD, Devonshire Police Station. And this is a recommendation authorizing the General Services Department to negotiate and execute a lease agreement with the DWP to use a portion of the DWP's surplus land at its Granada Hills Service Center to accommodate parking for the LAPD's Devonshire Police Station. Well, basically, I wish they didn't have to pay, but I will support this motion for the lease. However, here are the terms. A, term is 10 years. B, should be lease rate of $500 per month, not leased rate. B says leased rate. It should be lease rate, L-E-A-S-E, like in operating leases, capital leases, there are my SFAS 13 CPA background comes in. So that's... And subject to the approval of the city attorney, it's a lease rate of $500 a month, not a leased rate. There's no such thing as a leased rate. It's a lease rate. Now, an hour and 45 minutes of sleep still enables me to read, so please have more attention to your peons that type up these things. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Councilmember Burnson, we spoke about this item last week, and I think we had an agreement. I'm in favor of the motion with one small change, to give the department the authority to negotiate the lease, but to report to ITGS Committee for final authority to actually execute the lease, and it's part of our ongoing scrutiny of the department. So I'll ask for that amendment.
So you're.
I asked for that amendment in the motion.
I just want to clarify the amendment. You, you don't want to lease it at 500 a month.
Yes, negotiate these terms of the lease, but come back when, when the lease is finalized for authority to execute the lease.
Maybe we should find out if the rate was negotiated. Mr. Burnson.
First of all, I don't know where the $500 came from. I guess somebody stuck it in there arbitrarily. But I have no problem with the amendment for the negotiation. This is surplus land, next door to the station, they need parking desperately, it should be provided.
And you have my commitment to bring it back as quickly as possible.
Yeah, so the main thing is they bring it back quickly so that they can accommodate Devonshire Division.
Well, agenda's set at the next committee meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Padilla.
Okay. So are we in agreement now, what we're voting on? All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Next item, I believe, is item 40. Mr. Fuhr. Mr. Fuhr, I believe you called item 40 special.
Oh, just, you know what, can we continue until Tuesday? Because I called this question just to walk out of.
Okay. Yes, we're going to continue item 40 until Tuesday, which is.
April 17th.
And that brings us, I believe.
You have a closed session item, item number 42. You also have a special meeting item.
All right, we also have a special. Well, and besides that, we have a, a special, you know, a special special, that as soon as I finish signing it, will be before us. We, somebody said we lost a quorum? No, we still have a quorum. All right, let's do special one as soon as they give it to the city attorney. Okay, Madam City Attorney, this is special one.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yep. Mr. Ridley Thomas, can I wait?
Good morning.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. This is a motion from Mr. Hernandez. There was, there's a building in his district, 1565 Rockwood, that's been declared uninhabitable. All of the tenants have been moved out. One of the sets of tenants, I don't think they were, I guess Mr. Hernandez would have to say, but there was a problem with them being relocated in terms of financial assistance, and they were being put up by the Red Cross, and then they were staying with relatives in a very overcrowded situation. There's a special, special needs child involved. And this motion would be to take money from CD1's fund and assist them in moving into a habitable place. So the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda, and that there's an immediate need to act.
Okay, let's first open the roll on the findings. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, the matter is now before us. Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, this is a very difficult situation. I think many of you read the article in the L.A. Times about the house up on Bodry that basically had toxic methane gas levels that the fire department issued in order to evacuate. And the problem is that the homeowner, who also lived on the property, does not have the financing to create the mitigation systems to resolve the problem. We've had our, our Department of Building and Safety, as well as the Fire Department, and, and nobody's willing to say that, that the actual dwelling is habitable, because these methane gas levels could continue to grow. And so I, I've been dealing with the Housing Department and trying to figure out how to deal with the relocation of the tenants. This particular tenant is the last one. The Red Cross had put him up for a while, and I'm asking that we make the exception today in passing this motion, and I'm using CD1 funds to allow for some funding for relocation of this particular tenant. And so I just ask for unanimous vote.
Okay, so special one is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved, forthwith on that. Okay, we have left, we have left a closed session in our regular meeting, and a single item on the special meeting and public comment, and Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, item number 29. 28 is fine, but I want to remove reconsideration on 29.
Is there a particular reason you want to move reconsideration, since I have?
Yes, there was a committee report that included personnel. I wanted to address that.
Okay.
And it was summarily, summarily, summarily.
Well, it was, it was voted on.
Yes.
I asked.
Summarily voted on.
That's the way we try to do it around here, is get them voted on. All right, is there any objection to reconsidering item 29? Mr. Fuhr.
Madam President, for, for what it's worth, Mr. Ridley Thomas, here's the, the rhythm of things. 28 and 29 came up, and we had a number of speakers who were here speaking in favor of both items. When the matters were considered and went forthwith, I indicated to the speakers that they should go because they got what they were desired to do. So, so they're not here anymore.
All right.
The, I understand that at least one of my colleagues from, bottom line is, if, if you want to have a substantive discussion on something, I never like to procedurally cut off a discussion that could have happened but for inadvertence, so I don't want that to be the outcome. If you want to have a substantive discussion on the issue, I'm not going to object, even though it went forthwith, but I do think that we should continue the matter for a day when those who came all the way here could come back and participate again in the conversation.
Well, I'm comfortable with that if the continuance is what is warranted. Madam President, if I may.
Well, first, let's vote to reconsider, so we can give you the opportunity here. Okay, open the roll on reconsidering item 29.
I'm just going to let it happen.
Okay, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, you may recall, this is the matter involving TAPS and how it will be funded. I'm prepared to accept the point that is made, that there were persons here wishing to speak on the item. I know that we are in the process of budget deliberations, or readying ourselves for that. I also made the point that we are obviously confronted with a very tough budget cycle in terms of balancing the budget, allocating the resources that we deem consistent with the priorities that we want to advance. It would seem to me, then, that at minimum, rather than categorically rejecting item 29 as it is being proposed by Budget and Finance, personnel did raise rather substantial issues in that regard. Perhaps we should continue this item beyond the one or two days and cause it to be a part of our deliberations pursuant to the budget discussion. Otherwise, I think a much more substantive debate has to take place.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you. Madam President, Mr. Ridley Thomas, here's my recommendation. The, let's see, today is the 11th, next Tuesday is the 17th, the following Tuesday is the 24th. I'm thinking about a week from Tuesday because our colleague, Ms. Chick, is not going to be here next week, and she is integral to these proposals on the committee.
Okay.
The 24th will be after the budget is out, but we could conceivably deliberate before it's dealt with. Rather than make the decision now.
Yes.
To defer the conversation without having heard from the speakers who were here.
Right.
I guess I'll ask, Madam President, can we continue the matter until the 24th of this month, for the purpose of having the debate?
Fine.
As I say, even though it went forthwith, I, I don't like failing to have a discussion because of inadvertent thing, that's, that's not, that's not a good thing. So I'm happy to have the thing continued.
I appreciate that, but there were two committee reports, and I think the issues are substantive. And for the record, I think the passing of this has a preemptive, a set of implications as it relates to the budget. On the last round, we took care of the incremental piece pursuant to requests from the chair. I think what was not done in this instance is to see what the impacts are prospectively. That's what I wish for us to do, and I'm prepared to accept the two-week continuance or whatever.
I think we have an accord here, or decont or something.
Indeed. You're presiding well, Madam.
All right, so we're going to, 29 having been reconsidered, is now continued until April 24th. And now we have public comment, and then what's going to happen after public comment, members of the council, is we're going to recess the regular meeting, go into our special meeting, which is a closed session item. When we finish with that, we will resume the regular meeting, but the remaining item is also a closed session item. So let's go while we're going to be, since the next thing that happens will be reset after public comment, let's go now into public comment. Mr. Melrose Larry Green. This is the time for comments on items before the, within the council's purview, but not on today's agenda.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. My name is Melrose Larry Green. I want to say I, I was here last night until about 2:30 in the morning. Before I launch into my very brief public comment, I want to talk about someone who, who was here last night until 4:00 in the morning, talking about protecting and serving. Officer Curry, who was a member of the LAPD, was here until 4:00 a.m. last night as they were counting the votes in this room. Listen to this. He went home to West Covina and got back at 6:00 in the morning to be at work. And I want Mayor Reardon and all the members of city council who are watching this, and all the members of the media, to realize that that's real, protecting and serving. Officer Curry, who was here until 4:00 in the morning, went home to West Covina and got back to work at 6:00 in the morning. And, and I also want to say, I also want to say, if there's anything that we learned in this election with George Bush and Al Gore in Florida, it's that every single vote counts. And, and I, I had a great experience running for mayor of L.A. It was a great experience. At last count, I had about 800 votes, and I am now making a breaking announcement, which is going to go out all over the wires. I am releasing all of the 800 votes to Melrose Larry Green, to a fellow who I got to know during the campaign, a real great guy, a fellow who really sticks up for the little man, who, who saved me at the L.A. County Bar Association from being beaten up and arrested, Antonio Viegosa. I am saying this with all honesty and after careful consideration. I will be working as a volunteer, as I told you, I will support Antonio Viegosa if he beats Steve Soboroff, and he beat him handily.
Thank you.
And, and I just want to congratulate him, and, and, and this is a great day for democracy. Congratulations to everybody else. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Hasta la vista. Andale, 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 Antonio Viegosa.
That closes the public comment period, and we're now going to, you're certainly welcome. We're going to thank you for coming. We're now going to recess the regular meeting and go into our special meeting, for which you may now call the roll, and then we're going into closed session.
Burns and Chick, here, Glanter, Hernandez, Holden, Mizakowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Fornas, Wax, Walters, Furrow, Tam, members present, and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. This is now a special meeting of the Los Angeles City Council, and we are going into closed session for our one item, so if you are not involved in the closed session on the special meeting, please depart gracefully and quickly. That completes the agenda. We have a couple more items, Mr. Torque.
Motion's for posting and referral.
Without objection, they are posted and referred.
Councilmember Padilla, request to be excused from council attendance on April 17th for city business, a motion is required.
All right, Ms. Mizakowski moves unanimous vote.
The desk is clear.
Any adjourning motions? We have, you have an adjourning motion?
Yes.
You do, all right. In that case, will everybody please stand for adjourning motions? Ms. Chick.
Yes, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Henry Martin Grobstein, who was a World War II veteran, a recipient of the Purple Heart, and the beloved husband of the now-deceased Mildred Grobstein. Henry survived by a very good friend of mine and someone very active in Jewish Homes for the Aging, Michael Grobstein and his wife Barry, and Michael's brother Howard Grobstein and his wife Sheba. He's also survived by his brother Sam, sister Isabel, who's the loving grandfather to Marla, Mark, Aaron, and the great-grandfather of one child.
Anybody else? Call the roll. Thank you, we are adjourned. See you on Friday.